I would like to call to order the November 16th, 2020 Allegheny County Public School Board Meeting to order. If everyone would please take their mute off and stand for a moment of silence and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Huff has a flag for all of us if you need one. All right, our pledge, Pledge of Allegiance. Perfect. You all did amazing. I do have one announcement, one addition to make to the agenda. Item 21-116 will now be an action, moved to an action item. All right, Ms. Best, roll call, please.
Mr. Branson.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kern.
Yeah, I'm here.
Mr. Littleton.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Ms. Morgan. Ms. Sekner. Mr. Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ryan.
Here. Our first item is 21-110, School Board Commissions and Awards, our ABCD awards. Mr. Truitt, I believe you're going to take over.
Let me unmute first. I have part of that and I do have an introduction here, but it's Chairman Wright, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and Mr. Callahan. Often within an organization, there are certain tasks and duties that go unnoticed and taken for granted. These are critical tasks that are, these are tasks, rather, that are critical to the operation of the organization. When the job is done professionally and successfully, it's seamless and quietly efficient. Most of us never even see the job being done, but we absolutely see the result of it every day. Tonight, I'm here to call your attention to and recognize a very special group of employees. I am here tonight to recognize the custodians of Allegheny County Public Schools with the ABCD Award. Even before the governor closed schools last spring, this dedicated group of 22 employees was already ensuring all classrooms and buildings were clean and safe for our students and staff. As the pandemic grew, our custodians stepped up cleaning and disinfecting even further. This work continued throughout the summer. They added more steps to their cleaning regiment every day. They learned to use new disinfecting methods, new equipment, and increased safety protocols to protect us all. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm here to recognize the following for going above and beyond the call of duty for the students and staff of Allegheny County Public Schools. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read off the list of names. And I'll do it by high school, if that's okay, or by school. At Allegheny High School, we have Darling Brown, Paul Golden, Ronnie Humphries, Jason Loudon, John Romanello, Marshall Puckett, and Eddie Smith. At the Bus Garage, we have Darla Windling. At Central is Glenn Chickenwing Simmons. At CMS, we have Steve Kraft, Jeff Irving, Sheldon Chu, Deborah Pryor, and Adam Sweet. At Callahan, we have Darryl Tucker and Artman. At Mountain View, we have Bruce Green, Tim Lewis, Robert Long, and Deborah Palmer. At Sharon Elementary, we have Ernest Jones and Tim Link. So I would definitely like to recognize and call out those individuals for doing an amazing job this past six, seven months. I wish I could present this in person to them, but I will speak to all of them.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Truitt. And Ms. Best, do we have someone else who's going to announce the other?
I would want to do that one at a later meeting.
Okay. All right, great.
Give me there in person.
Okay. Our next item is 21-111. Do we have any public comment? Anyone sign up for public comment?
No one signed up.
All right. Next item is 21-112, School Board Member and Acting Superintendent Comments. I'm not sure how many school board members we have on here. I know Mr. Francis is on there.
I take it you wanted me to make the first comment?
You're the leader of the back, sir.
Well, first thing I want to do is thank you all for participating in this because, you know, if you're like me, I've both zoomed out. Anyway, the ABC Awards, you know, I agree with Ben. These custodians have went above and beyond all of them. And we thank you for your effort. We thank you for your dedication to our kids. Because without you guys keeping the school clean and keeping it disinfected, we couldn't, we couldn't build the school. But I thank you for that. Oh, you, Jacob.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have Mr. Kern.
Hey, how's it going? So I just want to hope everybody has a good holiday and Thanksgiving that's coming up. And congratulations to all the winners of the awards that run out. You guys really did deserve it. I did want to, are we going to do something for Craig Lane at some point? I don't know if it was a good time or not, but I don't remember us recognizing him. And I think he deserves recognition. I think it's black or something. But just wanted to throw that out there. But other than that, I hope everyone has a great holiday and enjoys it and eats lots of turkey. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Littleton.
I also would like to thank all the custodians and congratulate them on the ABC Award and thank them for going above and beyond, but also going to thank all the teachers and the aides, administration, bus drivers, everyone who makes it possible for anything to happen. And just want to thank them from the bottom of my heart. Also want to welcome Mr. Shaw on board and thank him for devoting his time to this. And just hope everyone to be safe and have happy holidays. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And Mr. Shaw, you're new to all of this, but this is our little chance at the beginning of every meeting to say what we like as school board member. Any comments you have?
Yeah, I just want to echo Mr. Truitt congratulating the custodians with the ABCD Award. They're kind of, in a way, where the rubber meets the road as far as keeping the schools clean so the other students and teachers can actually get in there and do their job. Also, it wrote about what Mr. Kern said. I want to thank Mr. Lane for his years of service to the school board. I don't want him to go unnoticed. I'm still in his term. I just want to thank him for his service. And I want to, while on the board, do everything I can to help the student body, the teachers, and promote the schools as best as I can.
Great. Thank you very much. I would just like to echo what everybody said and welcome Mr. Shaw. I'm sorry that we're, I'm sorry that there were, your first meeting is under these terms, but I think, I think this is probably the first all-virtual school board meeting ever in the history of Allegheny County. We've had, I think we've pretty much had meetings all the way through, but it seemed like the best thing to do, given the circumstances. Thank you all so much to all the custodians and like these other folks said, thank you to everybody who's gone above and beyond. And Mr. Allman was quick to jump on converting this meeting over to a virtual meeting this morning. And thank you to Ms. Best and Mr. Callahan for being so proactive. And we appreciate everything you all do to, sorry we don't have Ms. Morgan or Ms. Sekner here tonight, but I know they're both, they're both super busy right now. So I believe Mr. Truitt has one more thing he wants to say. And before we get away, and then we'll hear something from Mr. Callahan.
I did. I left off one person. I left off Jackie Brown. She's a part-time custodian at Clifton Middle School. I wanted to be sure I got everybody. And I had her on my list. I just made a mistake there, so.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Callahan.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, glad to see everybody's got on here without too much trouble. You know, last week was, had a lot of dominoes falling for our school system. We're hoping to get everybody back in person starting November 30th, give us a little time to die down for our area, hopefully, and get our kids back in school, because that's where we want them, back on our hybrid plan. And our hope is that the custodians, even though this has been going on since March, they're far from being done with this. So we need them to do everything that they have been doing and keep it going for our school. And I appreciate the heck out of them.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Our next item is 21-113, Consent Agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look over those minutes and bills? If so, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Francis. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Jacob.
Second by Mr. Littleton. Thank you. Ms. Best.
Mr. Branson.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kern.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Littleton.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Item 21-114, informational items. Has everybody had a chance to look over those? Anyone have any questions regarding those items? All right, if there are no questions on this, we'll move on to 21-115, Reports and Recommendations. We have some calendar information. Everybody's on board with that, we will move on to 21-116, Discuss Guidance from Virginia High School League. This is now an action item. Mr. Callahan.
Okay, me and Mr. Vaughn are going to tag team this one, but what members, Chairman Wright, I guess my school is not here, but you have in front of you, this is a copy of a plan that a lot of the Region Six and Region Seven superintendents got together along with some A.D.s and other human resource directors, trying to figure out a solid plan of going forward with the VHSL recommendations and our return to play. If you have read this, you'll know that there's some flexibility on there when we play, but what it comes down to is we're going to base whether we're able to put kids in a safe spot with the metrics from VDH and CDC. So we're going to use both the seven-day metric and the 14-day metric. Fans writing in, spectators, we're still working on exactly how we're going to do that. It's obviously with what the governor passed out on Friday. We may just be looking at no fans whatsoever. If we're going to limit it to 25, it'd be hard to pick and choose which participants, family members, get to come. But I would be happy to entertain any questions on this. Pretty much what we're going with is if we're in a high transmission or highest risk, we're recommending us to not play or anybody else come play us. If we start moving down to the orange and the yellows, that's a better chance that we can. But we're also going to be making these decisions on a weekly basis. So every weekend, prior to Monday at 12 o'clock, superintendents and their designees, whether it be A.D.s or resource directors, will make the determination whether the school system will be playing for that week. And we'll get in touch with local health department, which would be recent, if there's any underlying circumstances where it be, the virus could be contained to, let's say, most of the cases in the outbreak are hanging out at the woodlands, okay? And possibly even if we're in the red and that's the reason of the spike in numbers, then we could possibly still play. So it's fluid, but it does give us some hard and fast rules about whether we can proceed on to play or not. My question, and Mr. Vaughn will probably have a few more things to add in, is this something that you all want to see us move along with? Does this look like it needs a different direction? We're pretty much, like I said, this is what a lot of the superintendents in the regions have been working on for the last two or three weeks. We've met probably twice, if not three times a week for the last couple of weeks, trying to iron this out. And this is probably a similar document you're going to see on a lot of divisions' websites to give out to parents about how we're going to kind of go along with this for the winter sports.
Good evening, school board. Before we get too much further along, Mr. Brown, Ms. Hansford, and Corey Bowles, our athletic trainer, have spent an enormous amount of time on working on a pretty detailed document that discusses by sport how we will go about mitigating the spread here, as well as attempting to follow the guidance associated or has been suggested by the Virginia High School League. They've done a really nice job with what the expectations will be for their coaches, as well as the student athletes, whether we're in season, we're out of season, game nights, as well as practices. So there's been a lot of work that has gone into this. Lori, do you have the metrics to be able to bring up?
Yes, yes.
Can you scroll to make this state look, this thing's kind of off-center here?
If she wants to just go to Allegheny County and then scroll up, that will give you guys an idea. There you go.
You can't see the magic on it. Let me, I've got it pulled up here. So let me just kind of walk through. If we received, if today was Monday morning and we had received the information for the week for our contest, the first item we're going to look at is the weekly burden on our health region. And as of today, we are in the high burden area. We are along with several of the regions in the states, one of the higher burden regions. So that puts us into a very, very cautious and we're real concerned about participating. After that, then we will look at the CDST school metrics. These metrics are updated daily at 10 o'clock. And so this is kind of what Lori was showing you there. But if you go into Allegheny County, the core measures for Allegheny County right now, which is the total number of new cases per 100,000, and the percent tests of positivity over the last 14 days, are both in a high-risk area. And these are the two core areas that we will be looking at. So the next step, as Mr. Callahan talked about, this high burden or the core indicators in our area may be driven by a long-term care facility, for example. And so that's where we want to have that conversation with the local health department before we make a decision about the upcoming week's competition. Of course, then we are also going to be able to see if we're going to Bonnetac County, if we're going to Rapp or whoever we are, we may be sending our student athletes to compete against. We're going to be having conversations and looking at their data also. So the example would be today, if this was our day, we would likely not be participating, getting in any events this week, based upon that data. That make sense?
And Lori, if you want to scroll back up and go to that weekly transmission extent right there, and you guys can see that if you look down, pretty much anything south of Interstate 64 is all in the high transmission rate right now. So that's the other metric we'll be looking at, other than the reds and the yellows that was on the previous screen. So it doesn't look good for the south part of our state, let's put it that way. So Jacob and board members, the main thing is, does this sound doable for you all? And if so, would that be something you guys want us to proceed on with and approve it tonight for us to follow this template that we have? We're going to have, you know, obviously, Satan starts next month, so that's why we're looking to you guys for the guidance right now.
Can I say something? I think from a safety standpoint, this is a good thing. I think we should have done some sort of unanimous vote to have it changed from an information item to an action item. Because I think that's what we've done past practice. So I think we ought to do that again.
Well, as long as we change, as long as we change it before we call the meeting to order, it's okay, but.
Is that what you all did, I guess?
That's current.
That's what I, I just said it was changed. But, but, Mr. Kern, I do agree. And I think that brings up a good point that, and this is getting a little off-subject, but we do need to bring up that Roberts Rules to Order thing again. But I think in this case, I think we could, since I did it before the start of business.
I would totally agree with both of y'all, but the VHSL pushed this on us in a rapid time. There's no way we would have had two months to get this to you guys and get it approved. We're being hamstrung pretty hard on that. So I appreciate you guys working with us.
I just, out of concern, I don't want to violate one rule to pass another.
Well, if it's the pleasure of the board, we can definitely, we will definitely take a vote to change it. Ms. Best.
It's acceptable to change it at the start of the meeting, but if it's, if you want to take action to change it, then we can certainly do that.
Well, I'm fine with it. I didn't understand 100% if it was, I knew the announcement changed. I didn't know if that's what that was. But I do now, so I'm fine with it.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a?
I'd like to officially approve the item 21-116, Virginia High School League Guidance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kern. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Francis. Ms. Best.
Mr. Branson.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mr. Littleton.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes, ma'am. All right, item 21-117, Curriculum Revision Recommendations for Allegheny High School, 2021, 2022. This is an information item.
Chairman Wright, members of the school board, Acting Superintendent Callahan, what is in front of you is information for action next month to give you some time to take a look at it, new course requests, and just some updates to the program of study for Allegheny High School. One nice thing is that the general, just to note to you all, is the General Assembly did vote and is going to change one of the pathways to the advanced diploma. Instead of forcing kids to have to take your standard foreign language, they can now take computer science. It is a language with coding, and it makes perfect sense. Last year, you guys took the action, and we do have computer science AP at the high school. So we're actually kind of going backwards on this and adding in the foundations and the principles for students. Because we have found that sometimes students are so close to the advanced diploma, but they just don't want to do the foreign language. So I'm really excited that Mr. Ross is proposing this. The accounting class, just to note, is a CTE class. Current technical education is slightly different. I have to get that approved through the VDOE, not just you all. So next month, once you all take action on it, then I will submit the application for that. Some minor changes to some of the courses, more of the language up at Glenn Spangler's program at JRTC. And we are adding the African-American history course. Mallory Nicely and I submitted an application to be one of the pilot schools to offer the African-American history. And we were excited that we were chosen. So we put this before you. If anybody has questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Huff? All right, well, thank you very much, Ms. Huff. Our next item is 21-118, update from FLEC. I believe that would be you as well, Ms. Huff.
That is me again. Chairman Wright, members of the board, Acting Superintendent Callahan. And Mr. Shaw, I'm going to back up here and fill you in on FLEC, just real quickly. FLEC was brainchild of Mr. Callahan and myself back in March, when COVID kind of was starting to look bad. We knew we were going to need a very energetic team to help us get through this. And we have that now. It stands for the Future of Learning and Education Crew. There are now 42 members on this crew. And it functions, and it functions well, and it functions with great proficiency. They have done so much in terms of the instructional plan, helped with health mitigation, reopening portions of the school. They even had a sleight hand in the VHSL plan that Mr. Callahan and Mr. Vaughn created. The last time we met was November 4th. We were going to meet this week, but with everything going on, I postponed. But we will be back together here shortly. There are scheduling teams that have spun off of FLEC that are still active in the buildings, trying to, trying to see if we could get, sorry, trying to see if we can get some of the library more open, things like that. We have our Virtual Learning Assistant Program, which came about because of FLEC, which is just help for students in that remote environment. And after school, right now suspended until November 30th, but still, we are seeing some good population in that. Working on some attendance matters as well in the virtual learning environment. But one thing I'm super proud of, the VTSS has asked me to present FLEC as a network improvement community, as a NIC, and to be featured in their next Family Engagement Community of Practice. Mary Donan is going to join me, Robbie Bickford as parents, and then community members, and Georgia Bickford as a student. The state is really interested in FLEC. And I'm excited that Allegheny County Public Schools can present that to the state as a true network improvement community. And that is all I have, but I have, can answer any questions if anybody has them.
I'd just like to say congratulations on them using Allegheny County as a pilot program. Sounds like it was a good idea between you and Mr. Callahan.
Thank you. It really is. And I tell you what, it does take a village. And FLEC represents that village really well. And it's really been a great driving force for education in the county.
Absolutely. Thank you all very much. Does anyone else have any other questions for Ms. Huff? I apologized earlier. I didn't realize that Ms. Martin was on the call, and I didn't I didn't realize that Ms. Martin was on the call, and I didn't see her on there, so I would like to go back just a little bit and ask Abby if she had any school board member comments. I'm sorry, I apologize for missing you earlier.
Hey, you're fine. Yeah, I'd just like to thank our custodians. As a student, I pass them in the halls every day, and there's never a day that they don't stop and talk to me, and they're just so helpful in keeping our schools clean, especially now, you know, in the middle of this pandemic. And I'd also like to thank all of our teachers. I know personally that mine are doing a great job and making us all feel comfortable in the virtual environment, because it's definitely different, but hope everyone stays safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. And Abby has a little, Abby would like everyone to please wear their masks so she can have a chance at another chance at the state title for swimming this year. Abby and her team finished runner-up last year, so we had a great hope for them this year. And if you all haven't had a chance to read the Virginia Review from Saturday, Abby and her teammates are mentioned in there as some of the folks to watch for our upcoming sports season. All right, thank you. Our next item is 21-119, Internet Filtering IFB. This is an information item, Mr. Allman. And Mr. Allman, thank you very much for getting us all set up today of such short notice.
Yes, sir. Happy to help. Good evening, Chairman Wright, Mr. Callahan, board members. My information item this evening is just a brief update to an information item I had brought to the board back in September. As I had shared at that time, our internet content filtering contract is due to expire in March, and given the complexity of testing products in an environment that we're currently operating under, we wanted to get an early start. And one of the things that we discovered is that pricing is much more favorable than we had originally anticipated, such that it does not rise to the level, at least at this time, of formal competitive bidding. So at present, we have no plans to publish an IFB for our filtering contract. We're hopeful that we can just complete this purchase consideration to a typical quoting situation. However, if anything does pop up technically or pricing, that would be a surprise. We would plan to publish that IFB in December if we found a need, but at present, we don't think that that's going to be necessary. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have to see.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Allman? All right, if there are no questions, we'll move on to 21-120, one-to-one initiative update. That is with Mr. Allman as well.
Chairman Wright, Mr. Callahan, board members, good evening again. This is a good thing for us this evening. We're bringing back our video series this evening, ACPS Innovators, and tonight, we are highlighting the excellent work that's being conducted at Clifton Middle School by Mrs. Jacqueline Burdette, who is the middle school's business and digital applications teacher. This will be an attempt to share video via Zoom. We've not done this before. We think this will go okay, and then I'll see you on the other side. Lori, if you'd like to play that.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ms. Burdette, and I'm a CTE teacher here at Clifton Middle School. I'm currently teaching digital applications and make your own business, and I'm going to teach you how we innovate while we separate. We all know that things have changed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. There's a lot of new health and safety regulations, but I'm going to show you how we use the technology in my classroom. The first item is the Odessa webcams. I use my webcams every single class period, whether I'm teaching a lesson, or trying to contact parents virtually, or conferencing with students. Sometimes when I'm giving a lecture, it requires live visuals to help the students learn virtually from home. The next item is Prometheons. I love both of my Prometheons. They are touchscreens, and they really help students visualize and navigate through Google applications and websites. We use it for PowerPoints, design activities, Google Classroom, and so much more. And as a teacher, it also helps me to see exactly what the students can see when looking at lessons and assignments. You can also download many, many apps that could really, really help make your lesson plans very interactive and fun. My final item is using Loom software. I love using Loom so much. It is a free service that is so simple and so easy to use. This is how I film and edit my videos for my pre-recorded videos that I don't do live, but go ahead and post for my students virtually, or my students when they work ahead, to go ahead and watch the video in the classroom. Now, sometimes for students, a simple audio and demonstration is all that they need, but sometimes it really helps when they can see the teacher being animated while going over new material. Loom also has editing software inside of it that can really help highlight the most important information in the video, and it cuts out all the extra footage. We're all aware that classrooms have changed a lot due to COVID-19, and these three items really helped me meet the goal of making a great opportunity for education for students that are learning in the building and who's students learning from home. Thank you so much for watching this video, and stay safe.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add that Ms. Burdette has provided for you this evening a PowerPoint that is an attachment on the board memo, and in her PowerPoint, she shares some of her future plans with AirPod cases and also some apparel that they have planned for her business and digital applications. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have this evening.
Great, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Allman? Mr. Kern, it looks like down at the bottom that you had your hand up. Is that... Mr. Kern? If there are no further questions, our next item is 21-121, School Security Equipment Grant. Mr. Truitt, I believe that's you.
Okay, I think I'm back in shape here. I'm going to mute.
Okay. School Security Grant. We have submitted that back in August, July and August. We typically hear late September and have information for the October board meeting. As of today, we still have not heard, but I followed up with the BOE, and they have, they're like, a few more days. I'm like, okay, quite patient. Well, just to repressure, especially for the ones, new board members, every year, the governor issues a security grant funds where we can apply for a variety of equipment. Typically, in the past, they had to be attached to the buildings. This year, for the first time, they allowed us to order equipment or submit equipment grants for school buses as well for security equipment. What I submitted, the bulk of the security grant for was to update our bus radios onto the new county digital system. If we get it, it's about a $200,000 expense to outfit all of our buses with the new radios, and so it's typically something that we cannot do on our own, but with the grant, we can do that where they pay 75%, we pay 25%. And so that was the bulk of the grant this year, so it's one reason why I'm so anxiously waiting to hear, because I would really, really, really like to do that for our buses. Hopefully, just a few more days.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Truitt. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Truitt? If not, our next item is 21-122, Policy GCBC-RC. This is an action item.
Good evening, Chairman Wright, board members, Mr. Callahan. I brought this policy to my last board meeting. It is in line with the new 10-year licenses issued by the Commonwealth of Virginia for our teachers, as well as a strike of laws that was taken out by the Code of Virginia, and I'm seeking your approval here this evening.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Vaughn? All right, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the changes in the VSC, what is it, VSC? And then it's already off my board here.
Policy GCBC-RC.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Franson. We have a second.
A second, Jacob.
All right, we have a second by Mr. Wilson, Mr. Bass.
Mr. Franson.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Mr. Littleton.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes, ma'am. All right, item 21-123, Policy GCBD-Re. This is an information item. Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, sir. Thank you again. A year ago, the school board approved an extension of annual leave, which is awarded to 12-month employees to carry over more than the 12 that our regulation had previously granted as a result of COVID. As we all know, COVID isn't going to go out at the end of this year, and we're anticipating the same issues with the law carrying forward. And so we're requesting an extension of this leave through next school year, the 2021-22 school year. Now, different with this and the language that we have is that the additional days be utilized by that relevant staff by the end of December of 2021. As you know, the planned consolidation of the divisions comes in the spring of 2022, and we're setting a language up so that those dates could be used, so the division is not looking at a financial liability at the end of the division in the spring of 2022, a financial burden that we may find difficult. And so all I want to say is what we are proposing here tonight...
I think he froze, Jacob.
Here's that way. I was glad to see your head was still moving during all that. Well, that is an information item for everybody to look over, and if you have any questions over the next month, we'll be addressing that again in our next school board meeting. 21-124 is Policy JCH.R. Mr. Callahan, do you want to...
Ms. Buckner will give you a little background on this one, and then we can discuss as needed.
Chairman Wright and members of the school board, I'm providing the information that we have written procedures in place for refunding a positive balance to students who have graduated or moved out of the area. I surveyed my colleagues in Region 6. A number of them have similar procedures in place. I've also received guidance from my state specialist and auditing firm on how to set up the program.
All right.
And I think the plan was to maybe look at the timelines on that to make sure we're giving them ample enough time, and then also run this by the attorney to make sure we're good, you know, financial-wise.
All right, great. We'll discuss that again next one.
Back to you, Mr. Vaughn.
I'm sorry.
All right, our next item is 21-125, Policy JM-R, JM-F1, JM-F2, JM-F3, and JM-F4. This is an information item.
Mr. Chairman, the board members, and Mr. Acting Superintendent, as you may or may not be aware, the state of Virginia started several years ago the long and involved process of developing a state regulation for restraint and seclusion in public schools. This included public comment, much back and forth. Finally, that legislation has been passed. For the past five years, I have worked with the school lawyers, formerly with Reed Smith, primarily Patrick Andriano, who is now with Sandeep Anderson, in developing a restraint and seclusion policy for the division. It is a requirement of the statute which goes into effect January 1, 2021, that school divisions have a policy in place that is consistent with the new law that will take effect. This is not a special education law. It is for all students, so it applies to everyone. I would clarify again, if you've had a chance to look at the proposed policy, our division does not practice seclusion. However, it's advisable to define what seclusion is in the policy, so that if there is ever any question or someone who comes into the division that does not understand the policy, we have it written and in place. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone has. And this is for information. This will come back to you in December for an action item.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Keith? All right, if there are no questions, we'll look forward to seeing that on next month's agenda. Thank you, Dr. Keith. Our next item is 21-126, Additions to the Agenda. Ms. Bass, we don't have any additions to the agenda, do we?
Correct.
All right, our next item is Closed Session 21-127, Code of Virginia 2.2-3711.a.1, Personnel Matters, Actual and Potential Appointments, Assignments, Resignations, Terminations, and Salaries. 2.2-3711.a.2, Student Matters, Discussion and Consideration of Disciplinary Matters. 2.2-3711.a.19, Discussion of School Safety Reports. Do you have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved, Jacob.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Thank you very much. We're now in closed session.